Session to order. Superintendent Kirk Schrum and Assistant Superintendent Mark Thompson are not in attendance this evening. They are attending professional development training with other VUSD staff. We do have a quorum. This meeting is being webcast live and recorded. The recording or webcast may capture images and sounds of those attending the meeting. I will identify closed session topics of discussion. We have 2.1, recommended expulsions, 2.2, recommended reinstatements, 2.3, public employee assignment, reassignment and appointment, 2.4, public employee discipline dismissal, release complaints, 2.5, conference with labor negotiator, 2.6, conference with labor negotiator, 2.7, conference with labor negotiator, 2.8, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, 2.9, anticipated litigation. Public, general public comment on any closed session item will be heard at this time pursuant to board policy. The board will limit individual comments to no more than three minutes and individual topics to 20 minutes. It's recommended you begin your comments by stating your name. Seeing no close, no general public comment on closed session topics, I will now adjourn to closed session. As Board Member Gamoyan makes her way up here, I'm going to reconvene, I'm going to convene regular session. Superintendent Kirk Schrum and Assistant Superintendent Mark Thompson are not in attendance this evening. They are attending professional development training with other VUSD staff. I'd like to introduce the interpreter. Alondra Moran will serve as the Spanish interpreter for this meeting. Meeting attendees who would like to listen to the Spanish interpretation of the meeting, please pick up headphones from the table located in the back of the meeting room. This announcement will be now shared in Spanish.
Alondra Moran servirá como intérprete al español para esta reunión. Invitamos a los asistentes de la reunión que deseen escuchar la interpretación al español, el ir por audífonos a la mesa ubicada al fondo de la sala de reuniones. Gracias.
This meeting is being webcast live and recorded. The recording or webcast may capture images and sounds of those attending the meeting. Members of the public wanting to provide public comment on items listed on tonight's agenda, we recommend you fill out the public comment form, the green form located on the table at the northeast entrance of the meeting room. Please hand the completed form to Board Manager Delia Smart during her last meeting that we're all very sad, she's retiring. Happy for her. Before the item comes up on the agenda, we recommend you complete a separate form for each agenda item you'd like to complete comment on. Ms. Smart is standing at the table in the back of the meeting room. Members of the public providing public comment, please use the microphone on the stand located in the front of the room. Board Member Randy Vegas will now lead us in the pledge of allegiance. All right. In closed session on a motion by Board Member Nayler and a second by Board Member Vegas, the board agreed unanimously to appoint Kyle Yanis to the position of principal of Divisadero Middle School. Mr. Kyle Yanis has been employed with Visalia Unified for a total of seven years where he has served as an elementary music teacher, math teacher, assistant principal, and most recently as an assistant principal at Divisadero Middle School. Prior to his current administrator assignment with Visalia Unified, he taught math at Camino Nuevo Charter Academy in Los Angeles for six years. He also worked as a math instructional coach and an assistant principal at Wonderful College Prep Academy High School in Delano. Mr. Yanis earned a Bachelor of Science in Mathematics from the University of the Pacific and a Master of Arts degree in school leadership from California State University Dominguez Hills. He holds a single subject teaching credential and an administrative services credential. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, congratulations. We do have revisions to enclosure items and those enclosure items are 4.1, 6.13, 6.14, 6.15, and 10.3. We have one revision to the board meeting agenda. We are removing item 6.4 from the consent agenda agreement between Visalia Unified School District and Lift Enrichment to provide nutritional and culinary program after school. May I have a motion to adopt the revised board meeting agenda?
I'll motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
On a motion by Board Member Casey Barceleno and a second by Dr. Vegas, I'll call for a vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Public recognition, our student athletic teams and individuals. I'd like to welcome Administrator of Teaching and Learning Brian Phillips.
Good evening, Board President, our CFO, Mr. Hernandez, sitting at the helm tonight in community. Tonight, I have the honor to introduce Visalia Unified's outstanding spring sports teams and individual student athletes. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to recognize the parents, the grandparents, the neighbors, and parents of other athletes, as I refer to them as the support team. As a parent of a high school athlete, I know the sacrifices you've made year after year to get athletes to practices, to make it to games on time, the late nights, the early mornings, and the hours you've spent cheering on your athletes. So thank you for supporting your amazing athletes. Before we begin, tonight, we will be taking photos of our athletes. To access those photos, there is a QR code on the back table. And if you scan that QR code, you will gain access to all the photos as they are uploaded. So first, we're going to welcome El Diamante High School. As they are coming in, I'd first like to recognize two athletes that were unable to join us tonight. The first being Jaden Castillo. He is on the boys diving team. Jaden is a junior. He was the CIF Central Section Champion for Boys Diving. He is a two-time CIF Central Section Boys Diving, Diving Champion, and he qualified for the state meet where he finished 21st. The second athlete I'd like to recognize is Devin Abara, the for Boys Track and Field. Devin is a senior. He was the CIF Central Section Division Two Champion in the 1600 meter and finished first at the CIF Central Section Masters Championships, qualifying him for the CIF State Championship. He was the EYL Champion in the 800 meter, the 1600 meter, as well as the 3200 this year, and has broken numerous records at El Diamante during his amazing career. So now I'd like to welcome our El Diamante Esports Team. You guys can go ahead. Our El Diamante Esports Team finished second place at the state competition in Super Smash Brothers Ultimate. That's a big game. So team members include Gabriel Woods, Martin Urbina, Jaden Castro, and Marcos Perez. They are joined tonight by their coaches, J.C. Marquez and Mark Abbott. And I would like to invite any board member down that would like to take a photo with them.
Are we doing that with a coach?
Randy.
Next up, we will have Redwood High School.
Ms. Gracie, I'm going to have you go to the middle.
Tonight, we have Gracie Serpa. She is representing our girls' track and field. Gracie is only a sophomore, and she has placed third at the CIF Central Section Championships with a time of 57.28 to qualify for the CIF State Championships. She was also the EYL Champion in the 200 meter, the four-by-100 meter relay, and the four-by-400 meter relay. She placed fourth at the Division One Championships in the 400 meter, where she ran a personal best of 56.09. I'm sorry, .90. That time is also a school record for Redwood. Tonight, tonight, she's joined by Coach Jesse Ramirez and the Athletic Director, Mr. Wright. And I'll invite our board members. Dr. Gerd Iron, I didn't see you. I'm sorry. Wonderful. Up next will be Golden West High School. You can go out that way. Yep, go ahead and Scott. Up first, we have Angel Ornellis, Boys Track and Field. Angel placed first place at the CIF Central Section Division Two Championships in the pole vault. He cleared a PR of 13 feet, six inches in the pole vault this year. He also won 10 meets going undefeated until the end of the season. Coaches are Jennifer Marquez and Andrew Mashler. We are also honoring Mateo Sanchez, Boys Diving. Mateo placed, finished second place at the CIF Central Section Division Two Diving Championships, qualifying him for a state championship. He finished first in every dual meet this year, scoring a PR of 246. Just 13 points off the school record set in 2014. This was Mateo's second year in a row representing Golden West at the CIF State Diving Championships. The Golden West Dive Coach is Dustin Gregg, and we are also joined here tonight by Mr. Lambert, the Principal of Golden West. Up next, we have Mount Whitney High School. All right. Tonight, we have the Mount Whitney Boys Swim Team, the pioneers were the CIF Central Section Boys Swimming Division Two Champions. This was the first CIF Section Swim Championships in Mount Whitney history. The boys finished first in the 200 freestyle relay, 400 freestyle relay, and Tanner Lopez was first in the 50 free and the 100 free. Tanner also broke Mount Whitney High School record for the 50 with a time of 21.38. And the 100 freestyle with a time of 47.11 seconds. So our team members include Chandler Bruton, JD Chandler, Matthew Farkas, Hookman Gill, Juan Gonzalez, Tanner Lopez, Alejandro Martinez, Lucas McMunn, Jackson, I'm sorry, Jackson Rodmacher, Ruben Ramirez, Quinn Ray, Connor Roman, joined by coaches Steven Chapman, Brandon Roman, and Tim Van Sayak. Also with them is the Athletic Director, Mr. Pydak. And we'll take one more picture. You guys are going to have to stack. That's going to create, do some arranging.
You guys got it.
So once again, congratulations to all of our athletes tonight. Parents and athletes, you are more than welcome to stay for the remainder of the board meeting. However, if you would like to take this time to go and celebrate your athlete, I encourage you to do so now.
Okay, we're going to give directors a few seconds to work their way over here. So we're going to kind of, you know, do a 30-second pause, but don't go far. Okay, as they are mandarin in here, we're going to move to focus on student learning, spotlight on good things happening in the district. Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, Andy DeMayo.
Well, hello. Good evening, everyone. Board President Gabey, Chief Business Officer Hernandez, members of the board, and our community. I'm super excited to be up here tonight, one, because I like to talk, and two, because I get to talk about great things that are happening in our school district. So tonight, I get to share with you the things that have taken place this past month. So let's get right into it. So one of the things that's super exciting and unique about Visalia is our prom. As you know, prom is a joint event with all of our high schools. This year, the theme was the 1950s. Once again, our students did an amazing job, and the staff that were in attendance really said that the students were amazing. So this just captured some of those great memories there. Another great thing that happens in our community is called slick rock. And our students always perform well at the slick rock event. So this one is one that our high school students take part in. It's a competition, and it's a way to enhance the students' writing and technical skills. This year, there were almost 500 entries from schools from Merced all the way down to the south of Kern County. Redwood High School took home several awards, and LD won Best in Show. So congratulations to those schools. Absolutely. Next up, I wanted to highlight one of the amazing partnerships we have in our school district. Neighborhood Church, as you know, has been working with our school district for almost two decades. They start with students when they start at Houston Elementary School. This picture captures an event that is the second year in the making, and what they've done is they are highlighting those students who are graduating from high school and are headed off to a university. These are students who they've been working with and mentoring since their elementary years, and they followed them through middle school and then in high school. On this evening, they recognized 20 students, and they presented them with laptop computers and a gift bag to get them started on their way to collegiate success. So thanks so much to our wonderful partners at Neighborhood Church. Next up, I wanted to highlight another unique event called a pinning ceremony. Now, a pinning ceremony, for those of you that may not be aware, is something that takes place in the medical profession. And we have a unique opportunity in our district where students who are currently in high school can earn their degrees in the medical profession. You're going to see here at Ridgeview Middle School, we highlighted those individuals who received certification in nursing assistant, medical assistant, and pharmacy tech. So not only are they graduating from high school, but they're graduating from certification. And most of these students are headed out to both college to continue their careers, and most of them also are working with their new certifications. So congratulations to them. And then graduation this year. So again, you know, this is the culmination of everything we do in our school district, right? We start with our students at preschool and very soon, zero to three. Board, we're going to be talking about that more soon. But we start with kids when they're very young, and our goal is to make sure that we set them on that pathway so that high school graduation is a reality for them. Through this season, over 2,200 students were able to earn their high school graduation. And this is just some snapshots from some of those events. So that definitely deserves a congratulation. So would you give those students one more hand for me? So again, graduations took place not only at our comprehensive high schools, but also all of our alt ed schools. One of the things Visalia is great at and Visalia Unified is our families have lots of options, and we know our students need us in different ways. So it's nice to have those different options for students depending on what their high school career wants to look like. Next up, let's talk about VAPA, another great thing about Visalia Unified. And this is one of my favorite events of the year. So this is talking about the music festivals we do. These are culminating events that take place for our elementary and middle school students. We rent the convention center over the course of a week and a half, and the students come and perform for their families. It's an incredible thing for us to take a look at because there's thousands and thousands of kids that are participating in this. This year was especially exciting because, as you know, the VAPA program extended down to our early elementary grades, and we were able to see a large group of students take part who we didn't see in the past. So very exciting to kind of see them on their pathway to future success through the music programs. Another great thing that our friends at Mount Whitney have participated in and through the College and Career Program is their certification through linked learning. They achieve something very, very unique and special because there's only 27 linked learning academies that are certified gold in the entire state of California, only 27 in the whole state, and Mount Whitney is one of them. Aside from their gold certification, both the Ag Construction and Engineering and Business Finance Academies earn silver certifications. Congratulations especially to the instructors who get them to where they are and our College and Career Department for the state regulations. So thank you very much, Vicki, for you and your team. Another thing we like to do at this time of the year is we know we're only as good as the staff members that support us, and we've got a great group of employees in our district. One of the things we were excited about taking part in were those service awards. This is the time of the year when we get to recognize and thank those individuals who've been with us through milestones, a year, five years, four years, 40 years. So this was a picture of those opportunities that Mr. Schrum took to recognize those individuals in the ed complex who've been with us for many years. So we had over 271 employees that were celebrated, and with those 271 employees, that amounted to 4,500 years of service. We're super lucky to have such a dedicated team. Next up is the night crew. So this is a great group to talk about because, you know, these are kind of those unsung heroes, if you will, right? They don't get seen during the day. They take care of business when no one's around. Kids aren't here, staff isn't here, but boy, we know when they're not here. So this was our opportunity to really thank them for the great things they do every day because we know our students can't be successful if we don't set up their rooms the way they need to be in order for them to do the great things that happen during the day. So this was our chance to thank the night crew for making sure our 30,000 students have a safe, clean, and welcoming place to come to every day. So thank you very much, night crew. Absolutely. Also during this time of the year, we take an opportunity to recognize our employees that are retiring. This year was an especially large one because, as you know, there were some extra added incentives, if you will, for, for individuals who perhaps were considering retirement. So this year, we had to meet at our Mount Whitney gym that looked great, by the way. Thank you, Mr. Care, for you and your team. The remodel looks wonderful. So we met there with our families and staff members and once again, had a chance to thank them for the great things that have been taking place. And while it's a huge loss for our district, because again, we're losing very, very talented and wonderful people, we're super excited about these individuals being able to kind of head down their new journey and their new adventure, knowing that they will always be welcomed back in our guest services department because lord knows, we always have a need for guest teachers, guest classified employees, and guest managers for that matter. So we're looking forward to seeing them soon. Let's talk a little bit about some summer activities that are coming up. Y'all know that we have summer school happening right now. Mr. Hernandez is going to be talking about that in a little bit, but some of the things that our students are going to be anticipating are some fun field trips that are happening this summer, places like the LA Zoo, the Monterey Bay Aquarium, Sugar Pine Railroad, those type of things. Our leadership staff and the directors are also making sure that these individuals are going to have a great opportunity to kind of take part in those opportunities. And I also wanted to point out the observances that we took, that took place in May and that we're also anticipating in June. So again, lots of great things are happening in our world right now, and sometimes we get kind of bogged down on those things that aren't so pleasant, but this is our chance to really recognize those things that really, really are great. Some of those things that we wanted to recognize in May, we took an opportunity to recognize the Day of the Principal. We spent time talking about the school lunch heroes. It was also National Teacher Appreciation Week. It was our Police Officer Week, Mental Health Awareness, Asian Pacific Islander, and then, of course, School Nurses Day. And coming up in June, we will be recognizing Pride Month and also Juneteenth. Great opportunities for us to be thankful for the great things that happened. And then just some reminders for you about the things that have been taking place on social media. We've just listed some of those posts. We're working really hard to make sure that our message and our communication is out there so that our community is very aware of what's taking place, and they know where to go when they're seeking out those opportunities. Also, we want to remind them, we're always looking for talented individuals. So we know right now, we're blessed in our district. We're, we're a growing district in the state of California, one of very few. So because of that, we're always looking for some really amazing individuals to join our team. So this is just pointing out, we've got some opportunities coming up. And again, we're always looking for those individuals that can make a difference in the lives of kids to do the great things that we do every day. And with that said, that concludes my president, my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. DeMayo. Any questions for the board? Thank you again. Always awesome stuff that's happening and great to start our meeting here about that. I will move to general public comment on any school-related topic may be heard at this time. The board asks that any public comment on an item listed on tonight's agenda be addressed at the time the item comes up for discussion by the board. To comply with the Brown Act, California's open public meeting law, board discussion is limited to items on the agenda. Therefore, when receiving public comment for items not on the agenda, the board's role is limited to receiving such comments, and the board may not engage in dialogue with the public. The board thanks the public for its participation in public comment and understanding of the board's responsibilities. Pursuant to board policy, the board will limit individual comments to no more than three minutes and individual topics to 20 minutes. It is recommended that you begin your comments by stating your name. I have two requests to speak on the same topic, but so I'll just, the first one I have is Lisa Mae Anderson.
Okay. Hello, my name is Lisa Anderson. I'm just, I'm a parent. I'm here today as a parent. I have item two from other parents that had asked me to go ahead and read because they cannot be here. Sarah Rodriguez said, I'm giving Lisa the, being able to do the statement. As a parent of LD here, I have many concerns regarding the event and accusation that have been brought forward to the board numerous times. These ongoing accusations have caused my child and many other children so much unnecessary stress. My child has expressed to me and many others that she... My child has expressed to me and many others that she feels unsafe, uncomfortable around LDH parent who has brought all these accusations forth. Since all these accusations, my daughter's mental health has declined, and she has needed to see the site social worker. Why is this parent still allowed to be in the presence of our children? My child is not the only one who feels unsafe in our program. I believe this attack is a hate crime against our coach, and now our children are being directly affected by the actions of this person who is causing so much stress and problems within our program. If our coach and program is so bad, then why would you still want your child in this program? Why would you still want to be a part of our program? I have also Kate who contacted me, Kate Diaz, after I sent the stuff to the board manager. She said that I can absolutely add my, add my name and phone number also if you would like. I go, so should I mention that you agree with the parent's frustration? Yes, absolutely. Anything you say about yourself, feelings, frustrations, et cetera, I completely agree with. And then I'll note that when I start, and which is what I'm doing, I'm just showing that I have this. I will also send this to the board. The other parent I had that said something is Angie, but I'm going to read mine first because it's a little shorter. So myself, I'm a parent of a EDH as cheerleader, going on my third year or her third year, and I'm with them my third year. I speak today because I'm disappointed with all the information intimidation disrespect that has had or that has and continues to be tolerated. I showed grace for Laetitia Cervantes after being treated improperly at the set of setup of the Friendsgiving for and in front of our cheerleaders, 11/19/2023. Thinking she had a bad day in which I should not have been treated as such. Reminder, reminder, all parents had filled out a volunteer conduct attached, which is also attached. On 10/3/23. And I also have everybody's on file right here with all my notes for the year. Let's see. However, there were rumors going about in December, and I went to the principal in hopes to figure out what was happening to help. However, I was able, I was asked to provide all the notes from our meetings and did so that day. I can say that Laetitia's demeanor changed to one of secrecy since 11/19/2023 and proved to be 12/10/24 as she somewhat was setting up for the end of our cheer competition celebration, asked, and then asked me how many cheerleaders attending, and I confirmed what the number was. She said, no, the email said it was a higher number, and I stopped and looked at her and I asked.
Mrs. Anderson, I'm so sorry. But you can, can you leave those documents for?
Well, she has a copy of these documents, and Angie also has a statement. I really wish I had more time that I could read each of theirs, but she has a copy. I will, I will send the late response that I got from the other parent.
She can make a copy of that if needed. Thank you. Thank you. Susanna Torres?
My name is Susanna Torres, parent of an LDAMonti chair member. On February 4th, 2024, Laetitia Cervantes reached out to me regarding Coach Tracy Beans marking the beginning of this unfortunate ordeal. Subsequently, on February 12th, 2024, the parents of chair members had a meeting with Kim Nelson. Laetitia Cervantes arrived late and demanded that the meeting be restarted despite over 20 parents having been on time. She attempted to dominate the meeting and control the narrative. On February 21st, 2024, Matt Shin called the members of the cheer squad, including my daughter, into the office at LDAMonti High School. He asked them a series of questions before sending them on their way. Since then, Laetitia Cervantes has continued her crusade to undermine the cheer program at LDAMonti. She has made a spectacle of herself at every district board meeting and has posted on every public forum available. I have screenshots of her profile on the Nextdoor app where actions were taken against her profile for personal attacks, shaming, or harassment. The vendetta she has against the cheer coach has now negatively impacted the growth on the cheer squad. They are mentally exhausted and want this situation to end, and it's unacceptable that Laetitia Cervantes continues this behavior without repercussion. While advocating for one's child is important and the right of every parent, it must be done with merit and integrity, qualities which Laetitia Cervantes has not demonstrated. Despite attempts by school staff to address these issues directly with Laetitia Cervantes, the disruptive behavior has continued, creating a hostile environment that affects the well-being and safety of our students and cheer staff. It is imperative that immediate and decisive action is taken to address this situation and prevent any further incidents. I urge the school board to consider the following actions. Implement appropriate disciplinary measures as outlined in the district's policy regarding parent conduct. Provide additional support and resources to the school staff to handle such situations effectively in the future. Communicate clearly with Laetitia Cervantes about the expectations for behavior and the consequences of further misconduct. I'm sure ensuring a safe and supportive environment for our students and staff is of utmost importance. I trust that the school board will handle this matter with the seriousness and urgency it deserves. Thank you.
Thank you. Clayton Ipsen, Junior Medical Academy?
Again, my name's Clayton Ipsen. I'm a president of Health Force who provides the Junior Medical Academy program. Wanted to just kind of re-share at the end of this semester just some of the things about the Junior Medical Academy program that's part of the Expanded Learning Opportunities program that VUSD provides. Excited to say that we had nearly 900 students participate this year, exploring healthcare careers, learning what the diversity of healthcare careers can be. And I'm really excited about our continuing linkage with the Mount Whitney Academy of Health Sciences and having those students mentor and work with our fourth through eighth, excuse me, fourth through sixth graders that participate in the Junior Medical Academy. This year, I'm excited to say that Shannon Ranch won the Kenzo Trophy. It's a trophy about Yatol. So they were the outstanding school that competed in our skills and knowledge competition. That competition this year had, for this semester, had nearly, nearly 90 students participate. But the more impressive part was we probably had 150 to 200 family members come and attend at Mount Whitney. Our parent engagement really increased this year as we used Remind App to engage parents, let them know what classes, what field trips were coming up. Of field trips, we had over 54 field trips for this program to different work-based learning sites, so going to clinics, laboratories, dental offices to really see what the work looks like. And as you know, for most students, they've only been there for shots and feeling bad, so it's, it's important to get a positive experience and see what that looks like. Really excited as well this year, we were able to participate and recognize five Mount Whitney students with scholarships of $500 to pursue careers in healthcare as part of our Health Force Scholars Program. And part of that eligibility is that they had participated in mentoring and working with the Junior Medical Academy program as well as, of course, pursuing a healthcare career, making a commitment to serve rural communities. We're excited to continue to expand. I know Mr. DeMaio mentioned the pinning ceremony, which was a great, a great ceremony, and we're excited to hopefully work with Visalia Charter Independent School as well next year to involve those students as part of our mentoring and making them eligible for scholarships as well in the future. I'll leave this with you, just again, some more statistics and other things, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. Moving to consent agenda, would any board member like to pull any item from consent?
Yes, yes, I'd like to pull 6.29. 49, sorry.
Okay, any other items? All right, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda aside from 6.49?
Motion?
A second?
On a motion by Dr. Odo and a second by Casebeers Aleno, oh, Vegas, the other doctor. Okay.
Motion passes unanimously, 7-0.
Okay. Item number 6.49.
I'm pulling it because it's about me.
May I have a motion to approve item 6.49, ten, resolution board member attendance?
Moved.
Okay, this time. All right, may I have a second? Okay, so on a motion by Dr. Odo and a second by board member Nadler, call for a vote?
Motion passes six with one abstention.
All right. Board member reports. All right, we'll start on that end. Board member Belt?
Thank you, President Gaby. First, this has been a season of lots of celebrations, and I appreciated being able to attend. I counted 10 commencements and pinings, but one that stood out was the Redwood 540 graduates at a, at a clip that was, well, let's just say Dr. Odo lost about five pounds because he was profusely sweating to continue to hand the folders to me, and we were, they had it down to seconds per student. I don't know if everyone knows that. And kudos to Matt Shin and the team for literally trying to bring all of our graduations to a, a good level without having people spend three hours attending graduation. I had a parent complain about not enough seats in the stadium. We can't rectify that. So that's, that's just part of the whole situation. But it was amazing to, every time we mind ourselves, it was maybe our sixth or seventh graduation, but it was their first and their only. So you just got excited one more time, shake their hand and say, yeah, you made it, here we go. Good job, though, all the principals who worked really hard to not only make it a special time, but make it a respectful, wonderful honoring of milestone. And then, of course, we did things like, we were in LJ Williams to do some of our smaller schools and then in the stadium afterwards for the larger ones. The retirement that we mentioned earlier is still something that is exciting, that we have so many people going on to a new chapter. But we're also excited about filling all these spots, all these gaps. And I spent a lot of time reminding those retiring, leave notes of what you do, it's not in a job description anywhere because we have gaps. At nutritional services, we have several, and so we, we want to make sure that we have all of those holes filled, but we also send off some amazing people who have invested in children and students at Visalia Unified for a lot of years. One of those was the Night Custodian Appreciation Gathering where there was one custodian who retired after 42 years. Those are the kind of people you don't just easily replace, but that was really fun to be a part of that. I'm standing there and Mr. Wallace, he hands me a microphone to say something, never short of words. I got to encourage those staff, they're very important, that we're able to do what we want to see happen every day, and that's every student learning every day. The CSCA Saturday Gathering, again, another opportunity to acknowledge a lot of employees for their work. The pinings were not only significant, but I had to keep reminding myself, the farm, what do we call them, the farm techs, was not farming, it was pharmaceutical. Thank you, Vicki, for actually highlighting that. We have so many students who are already career-ready for some things in some areas, whether it be the medical recording, the CNA, LVN, lots of opportunities. And finally, I want to mention the Avenue of Flags Memorial Day Gathering. Golden West did a phenomenal job representing Visalia Unified's finest. Choir, orchestra, all three of our directors were there, and they helped make that 4,000 flag recognition of Memorial Day a very unique, wonderful time because they, we brought our own sound system from Golden West, from the school district, and integrated it with the veterans so that they can make a very good presentation. I was proud to be there to see us well represented.
Board member Casebeers Aleno?
Yeah, just very briefly, I wanted to mention that we, when we talk about retiring, that we are losing, and I know you mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, but a very special person to, to me and to our board, and that's Delia. She's kind of always in the background, but especially as a board member from a new board member to a board member now, she's always sending us the right information. She's constantly trying to get me to make sure I arrive on timed things. So you won't have to do that anymore, Delia, but we are going to miss you a whole heck of a lot. You do a lot for us, and I just wanted to give you a special shout out because you really will be missed. And then I also just wanted to, you know, congratulation to everyone, you made it through the year, summer break, but also that, thank you to those of you who are still doing amazing things for our district even over the summer. I know that we have summer school in place, and we have a lot of kiddos enrolled in that. We have our heart programs, obviously, I think athletics are starting to do some things as well. And even our Office of College and Career, I know that we just, our interns started today in our office, and so just a lot of, of good things happening even over the summer that makes me really proud of our district. So thank you.
Board member Gomoyen?
I want to give a shout out to Delia Smart as well. We could not do this job without her. I call her my bestie because I probably call her more than anybody. And yes, I don't know what I'm going to do, I'm going to get her personal phone number, I think. So my mom took a fall, so she's been in the hospital for the last month, and I've been there the whole time, and I miss graduation and talk about bad FOMO. But luckily, Dr. Odo was so kind, he sent me pictures of every graduation. So thank you. That meant a lot to me. It was really hard missing graduation because that's the culmination of what we do. I just want to thank teachers, you finish strong. I'm looking forward to August. August is like December to me because, you know, I always sing that Christmas carol in August. It's the most wonderful time of the year, starting school, the start of school is amazing, and I'm excited for that. And I know as a teacher, you finish and then you start looking forward. Plus, my mom will be home by then and strong and resuming her life, so I'm looking forward to August.
Board member Odo?
Okay, so a couple of things, and both have already been said. First off, graduations were a wonderful set of events this year. Paul and I did them all, different tempos, but, but always great to shake hands and see kids shining as they come across the, the stage there across the field. And the best kids this year by far were Mount Whitney's kids. So if there's a Mount Whitney person here in the building, your kid's shown that night like crazy. It was, it's fabulous. But graduation represents not just the accomplishment of kids, but also the work of every adult in the organization to get kids there. So whatever you do, wherever you work, whatever your role, you help to make graduations happen. Those kids cross those lines because of what we adults, you adults, all do together. And then the last thing, Delia, you're still in the room, right? My turn. So I've known Delia for a long time and had the, the opportunity to work with her very, very closely for an extended period of time, and she is the best. She is confidential. She never ever crossed a line that she shouldn't cross with regard to working with information. That also means she's professional and correct in everything that she does, but not stodgy. She has a great sense of humor, fantastic sense of humor, and I'll refer to that in a minute, very highly skilled, enormously positive in everything that she does, supportive of the people around her and certainly the superintendents, deeply experienced, and again, a great sense of humor. My first night working at the district office in senior leadership, sat right there, right next to where Randy is, and I said something stupid and she kicked me. So that was our first interaction. So thank you for that because you were right and I was wrong, but that's what kicked it off. So there are, the only people that know what a superintendent is, does, and goes through are the people that actually hold the job, and it's a fantastic job. You would think that the next people closest to that that would understand what that job is are the assistant superintendents. You'd be close, but you'd be off. It's the assistant to the superintendent, the Delia person, who knows what goes on because he or she will see everything that comes through the office, will see the response of the superintendent to whatever comes through. So he or she is there on the really great days when you get wins and things are going fantastically, and there's lots of those. She, he or she is there on the days when the chancleta comes out and you take a beating and you die a little bit on the inside. She sees that and is there too, and she saw all of those things with me and I'm sure with all of the six superintendents that she served during the time that she was in her role there as assistant to the superintendent. So on behalf of the six of us who worked with you in that role, Delia, thank you for everything that you did. You made us all better, and it was a joy and a pleasure to work with you. So thank you and congratulations on retirement. So thank you and congratulations on retirement.
Dr. Viegas.
Thank you. I think Dr. Odo said it all, but thank you, Delia. Thank you to all of our retirees. Was able to attend many of our events as well as was the retirement reception. And we were just going to miss you so much. I was able to attend almost all the graduations except for two. I had to go attend my little sister's graduation in Bakersfield, which was really exciting and really fun. But just as Walta was talking about, you know, August being her favorite time of year, I really enjoy seeing so many students engage in summer school activities in our ELO programs. I've gotten lots of great community feedback from folks around our ELO programs, which is fantastic. The other day, I randomly went to play pickleball for like the first time ever, right? And there was a young girl there and her mom was, you know, saying like, hey, show them what you learned in ELOB. And she had learned how to play pickleball in ELOB. And I was like, oh, wow, this is so random. Like, I didn't know people use these acronyms outside of like, you know, the district office and our sites, but that's just really exciting to see. Just wanted to give a shout out to all of our staff that is continuing to work hard during the summer, both during summer school and to prep us and get us started for a fantastic start to the fall this year. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Board member Nadler.
And everybody kind of said it all, but I also doubt you'll be very much missed. And thank you for all your hard work because, again, you keep us in line. We need that sometimes. I missed all the graduations. I had to fly back to New York and help my son get acclimated to his PhD program that he's going to back in New York. So I did miss and I love the culminating, you know, graduations. And thank you again, also, Mr. Odo, for the pictures because not being there, you're wondering how is it going? And so thank you, thank you so much for those pictures and keeping me informed and along with Walta. I want to just thank all the staff and the teachers for a great year. Did an awesome job. We've learned a lot, we've grown a lot, our kids have grown a lot. I am just so excited next year because of all the different programs we have in place with our reading and our math and our ELOB and just all the things that we do for students. When you take a step back, it's kind of overwhelming of all the services we offer as a district, which tells me that we do a lot. I mean, our staff does a lot. And I just can't thank you enough. And I hope that you take this summer to relax and enjoy some time and just kind of let your hair down and then hit it hard again in August because that's what we do as educators is, you know what, we gear up towards, for the August. And that's the best time of the year when we see those kids walk through. I do want to give a shout out to Vicki Lonnie and also, you know, the CTE program for medical pening. I did go there. I always love that program because I just, I just think, man, we have, we have a lot of students that are ready to go out and get a job or go on and get more in that area. So you did an amazing job. Also, if you didn't have a chance to go to our music festival, I went and I brought tears to my eyes. I, I, I hope no one sees me crying because by the time they got to the end, which was the Valley Oak Area Fourth Grade Classroom Musical, which was the eighties theme, and they, those little kids were just so impressive and the dance moves and the singing and the, I just, you know, and, and, you know, all the adults that got them there. And I, you know, Caitlin Walker, I know was there because I saw her dancing out there along with, I think, Robert, and they were both, you know, dancing in front of the kids. I thought, wow, they have a lot of energy to get all those kids to perform the same way. And they were just, they were awesome. So if you ever have a chance next year to go, it's a, it's a treat. And so thank you, thank you, everybody, for all your hard work.
Thank you. And they dressed up for the eighties too, and that was pretty awesome. Although my kids do like to remind me, that's pretty good music for the 1900s. And that is not a nice reminder. So, but yes, congratulations to our graduates. It is like contagious out there and it might seem like a long week, but it flies by. The students, you know, the parents, and I know, you know, Mineral King Bowl, but there's something magical about that place. And when you're in there and the sun setting. And so I do appreciate that we still open that up to everybody and we're not trying to do seats and tickets and things like that because it's an amazing opportunity for everybody to just come celebrate because like everybody has said, it takes a lot, it takes a village to get our students there. And yes, Delia, we will miss you. I'll miss riding a rickshaw around San Diego. And last of all, yes, there's so much work that goes on during the summers. And I know our facilities and our maintenance, they kind of refer to as their 40 days and 40 nights and they're underway and they're working hard and they're working hard in heat. And so that's pretty, pretty impressive. So thank you to everybody for a great school year and for all the work that's continued this summer. And with that, I will turn it over to our CBO, Nathan Hernandez.
So first, I have to figure out how to work the mic. So, you know, summer is underway. We've got lots of summer programming happening, as Mr. D'Amelio mentioned, lots of students in elementary summer school this year, a lot more than we've ever had. So lots of activities happening in the summer. Also had three very impactful days of training with our, with our principals and directors last week around organizational change. And I'm very excited about what that's going to bring to us for next year. And then we have on agenda tonight, our collective bargaining agreements with the UTA and CSCA. So very happy about the way we collaborated with those groups and around negotiations. And then again, just, you know, have a great summer, get some rest and relax and get ready.
Thank you. Okay, recommended expulsions. Do I have any members that want to pull any expulsions?
Yes, I want to pull 232451E, number four.
Okay. All right. May I have a motion to approve the rest of the recommended expulsions?
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
On a motion by Board Member Odo and a second by Board Member Gomoyen.
Motion passes unanimously seven oh.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the recommended expulsion 232451, number four?
So moot.
Do I have a second?
Second.
On a motion by Board Member Gomoyen and a second by Dr. Odo.
Motion passes six with one no.
Okay, recommended reinstatements. May I have a motion to approve the recommended reinstatement?
So moot.
On a motion by Board Member Gomoyen, may I have a second?
Second.
On a motion by Board Member Gomoyen and a second by Board Member Viegas.
Motion passes unanimously seven oh.
All right. Adoption of Instructional Materials for Elementary Visual Arts Program First Read. Administrator of Teaching and Learning, Breanne Phillips.
Good evening again. Let's wait just a second for that to come up. All right, so we are here for our elementary art adoption, and this is just our first read tonight. As always, we ground our adoption process in our core beliefs and commitments as we're committed to all students achieving at high levels and demonstrating continuous growth by providing high quality learning experiences that allow students to reach their fullest potential. Through our adoptions, we truly do set the conditions for our school leaders and our teachers and staff to set those conditions for our students to be successful. As we've engaged in a continuous improvement process with our elementary visual and performing arts programs as we expanded into TK through three this year, recognizing that we launched the year without an adopted curriculum and we were designing units independently of an adoption. And that was very taxing on our teachers as well as limiting the resource, use only creating guardrails within the resources we had. And earlier this year, we did adopt a supplemental resource, Deep Space Sparkle. And while that resource has supported us through this spring semester, looking at a true curriculum for our teachers to drive the instructional practices was really our next step in improving our programming. Our team, while this was a speedy adoption process that they engaged in, we did hold true to the process that we have within teaching of teaching and learning that we see repetitively as we come up for our first and second reads for these. Within this, our teachers did get to pilot a unit of study and so that was able to drive us home with the, with the curriculum that we are recommending. The curriculum that we are recommending is the Art of Education University Flex Curriculum. Now, within the state of California or the CDE, the California Department of Ed, there's only two curriculums that are approved for elementary art education. And of those two curriculums, only one, this curriculum is K through eight. The other one is first grade through sixth grade. And so because our program does serve our TK students through our third grade students, we wanted to look through the curriculum through the lens of what can we stretch down into TK, but also meeting the needs of our, of our kindergarten learners. This curriculum was approved by the California Department of Ed in 2021. This curriculum will give our teachers 121 units of study and 735 individual lessons. There are supplemental resources that come along with it, but what is most impressive with this curriculum is there is digital ongoing professional development. So as we engage within our professional learning time within our elementary schedule, this is another resource that we'll be able to utilize throughout the year. From our teacher perspective, after our second step, when we pre-screened, we didn't have 100% of our teachers ready to identify this as the curriculum to move forward. However, after we went through a pilot of the unit, 100% of the teachers are recommending that we move forward with the Flex Curriculum for the adoption. This will be a six-year adoption. With that comes 12 digital teacher licenses. While I know that doesn't seem significant, we have 11 teachers. So that is why the number is lower. It does come with professional learning every year. When we do our adoptions, we make sure as we get new teachers, we are able to provide them professional learning onboarding through the curriculum program. Additionally, the on-demand professional learning. We also have the opportunity to attend two digital virtual conferences for the 12 teachers in 2024 and 2025. The cost of this adoption will be $66,621.60 to the cent. So with that, are there any questions?
Is there any public comment? Any board member comments? This is not an action item, it's a first read. Thank you very much. I will now open the public hearing, oh, public hearing and first read on the 2024 to 2025 Local Control Accountability Plan Review. So I'll now open the public hearing to allow for public comment on this item. And our presenter, there he is, Administrator of Family and Community Services, Jim Sullivan.
Good evening, Board President, Ms. Gabi, and we're School Board Members and Mr. Hernandez. My name is Jim Sullivan and I'm the Administrator of Family and Community Services. I'm here to share with you our 2024 LCAP rough draft. As always, we always be, ground ourselves with the foundations as, oh, I have the matter of practice. We ground our foundations with the, we ground ourselves with the foundations as well. Each meeting during our meetings with our parents, we would remind them of our core beliefs and especially focusing on student achievement. And then again, we would also remind them is that our goal is that 100% of our students graduating college and career ready. So the LCAP is a state mandated three-year plan that describes how we increase or improve services for our low-income English learners and foster youth. The plan shares how the $67 million is directed towards supporting those students. Some of the legislative changes you will notice are in the services towards unduplicated sections. All sections that are just, that the district, that are district-wide must be justified through data regarding the unduplicated students, how the action addresses the data, and what specific metrics will that action support. In addition to addressing district data, is now required that we address all student groups for each school and student group that's identified in red. So you'll notice in many of the actions, we will call out specific schools and the student groups that are in red. Another change that we must identify the schools and, and the goals for those schools that qualify for Equity Multiplier Funds. These funds are for schools that have a non-stability rate of 25% or more and more than 75, 70% of the students are identified as low income. So what that means is, is their population, if they've turned over more than 25% of their students in the school year. So our two schools that are qualified are Sequoia and Creekside. So you'll see a goal and a plan and how each one of those, how we address the support for those schools as well. The components of the LCAP, the LCAP is a template is required. It's, the template is required by CDE. We cannot change the template. Here are the components of, in our document now. Dr. Odo, if you remember when we used to do it, it was like 80 pages. It is now over 130 pages. The first section is reporting on what we did for this year's LCAP and the second section is our plans and goals for the 2024 LCAP. The community partners in our LCAP, you'll notice a section called titled Engaging Educational Partners. In this section, we identify community partners as providing input. In this section, we called out some of the specific suggestions each partner provided and how the LCAP was influenced by these suggestions. Ideas such as students identifying how much they appreciated the counselors and social workers on campus and how paying for the additional teachers was important to many community members. And there's lots of other suggestions that the parents, teachers, administrators all had in developing our LCAP. The funding, we're required that all fund sources that fund the activities that are written in the LCAP. We have to identify each one of those funding sources. So you'll see federal funds, which are titled one, two, three, and four, supplemental concentration funds, which are the funds we receive based on the number of students who are unduplicated or English learners, foster youth, or socioeconomically disadvantaged. And then other state funds as well, grants, even our transportation funds have to be identified in there since we use that as an action in our LCAP. Goal one, you're going to see that we actually have worked with our community and we've changed the goals so that they align with the strategic plan. So for, in this instance, all students will advance towards proficiency in every subject and every grade level achieved through the implementation of innovative methods, collaboration, comprehensive professional development, and an effective integration of technology. You'll see those, the language of our goals are the language that is on our strategic plan. The metrics for goal one is college and career options such as percentage graduating CTE pathways and A through G, percentage passing AP exams. Both ELAC and redesignations are on there for ELs. And as well, we've added additional metrics for grades. And each one of our metrics is now broken up by student groups. So you'll see ELA, PASP, and then you will see all students as well as every student group that is in Viseo Unified. Actions that are in goal one are technology and library support interventions for reading and math. We have additional teacher support, class size, professional learning, counseling, course access to visual performing arts, sports, CTE, and link learning. In addition to district-wide actions, it was mandated that we address specific schools and student groups that have been identified in red. To address this requirement, specific sites will be provided training in ELD strategies for our English learners such as, and also for dual immersion. ELD pathways and other childhood supports have been written in the plan as well. Goal two, the metrics are suspensions, chronic absenteeism, graduation rates, as well as surveys from parents, teachers, and students on how they feel about their school. Actions that we have for this goal are school social workers and school psychologists. We pay for part of school psychologists to help with behavior. Assistant principals at all of the elementary schools, middle and high schools, one at the high schools. Support for TK and kindergarten classrooms, behavioral teams of BITs, and on-campus interventions, attendance and engagement in our school transportation. For specific schools and student groups that have been identified in red, we'll provide training and trauma-informed practices and training for their tier-two teams. For goal three, this one is aligned to community engagement. Our metrics for that will be surveys for families that have participated in the Family Community Resource Center as well as community partners to see if we are honoring the two-way commitment, two-way conversations that we would like. Actions that Actions that address this goal are the Family Community Resource Center, enrollment, and our communications team. Goal on four and five, this is the goals that are required because of our Equity Multiplier Funds. For Sequoia, we are will increase graduation rates and English learner progress, that is why they're in. They receiving additional funds for improvement. As well as for goal five, will be Creekside for suspension rates. Our next steps will come to you for approval in June and also throughout the year. Then we review our current implementation and the dashboard for the following year. Any questions?
Is there any public comment? Board member comments, go for it.
How were students selected for this student advisory board?
So it was used, we used Mr. Schrum's student group, so there was special ed, there was English learners, and there was one from every elementary site and middle school.
And for families wanting to participate in a greater input in the LCAP process. In one of those other advisory committees, whether that is ELAC or the other committees mentioned, where can they go to learn more information?
So the ELAC is through the Curriculum Department and that is they invite all English learner parents. That are connected to the ELACs at the school sites. So each school site has a representative from for ELAC and for the District Advisory Committee. As well as we, we have other community members that come as well, we invite.
Thank you.
Any other board member comments, questions? All right, then I will close the public hearing and reconvene regular session. This is not an action item, it's a first read only. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you.
All right, public hearing and first read of the 2425 VUSD proposed budget. I'll now open the public hearing to allow for public comment, Chief Business Officer Nathan Hernandez.
Okay, good evening, President Gabey and members of the board. So this is our first reading of our 2425 VUSD budget. This is not a action item tonight, but it is a public hearing. So as we've, we talked about, we guide or ground ourselves in in the district foundations. Because our budget is really the way that the board provides resources to meet their core beliefs and commitments. As well as our commitments for student learning and then in the fall, it'll be how we resource the strategic plan. And so again, all in alignment with meeting our mission of every student learning every day. So here's our quick agenda, we'll look at the state budget, we'll do a quick update there. We'll look at the highlights and assumptions and how we developed the budget, the district budget for 2425. We'll look at our general fund summary and our multi-year projections. And our some required items with our minimum reserves and then we'll talk about what's coming next. So this is our budget timeline, so we're at the top, we are starting over again. We're always in this cycle of developing a budget or closing out a year. We'll be back in September with our unoderaed actuals closing out the current fiscal year. And then we'll be back next week with our budget adoption. On the state budget, so the last revision to the state budget was in May, the governor announced now a forty, close to forty-five billion dollar. State shortfall up from thirty-seven billion in January. In May, they also took some action to try to address that, about seventeen billion dollars worth of actions were taken and state cuts. Revenue reductions, borrowing, delays, deferrals, all the things that we do when it's time to reduce our budgets. Most of that outside of education, there were some education cuts proposed in May. Those were to some one-time funding sources for facilities, so. Five hundred million dollars for TK and kindergarten facilities and another eight hundred and seventy-five million that was intended for the state facility program. Outside of those reductions, the state is utilizing most of their reserve balances. Both the state reserve and the Proposition 98, the education reserve balances to balance their budget for next year. There's a lot on here, but I want to talk about most of these items because it is what we use to develop our budget. So the state has proposed a cost of living adjustment on our, our local control funding formula revenues of just over one percent. No changes proposed to the two new programs, Expanded Learning Opportunities Program and Proposition 28, which is our BAPA Music and Arts Programs. There is still a reserve cap in place of ten percent. That may be lifted if the state utilizes more Prop 98 Reserve, more education reserve to balance their budget for next year. Then if that goes below three percent, then that cap is lifted. We're at eight point seven five, which is about forty-four million dollars in our district reserve. No change to STIRS rates for this year, so pensions are pretty stable, a slight increase in our PERS rates. But again, not a lot of new state funding to cover those new costs. Health and welfare, we don't have any cost increase proposed for next year. But looking at our prescription costs that likely will, we will likely have an increase in 2526. So we've, our clinic has done what it's supposed to do and it's maintained our cost, pretty cost neutral for the last several years. Enrollment and average daily attendance, we are improving in our attendance rates by about three percent year over year. But in this year, we lose the protections from the pandemic and the COVID with the hold harmless years. We don't have that three-year or that three-year averaging doesn't include one of those hold harmless years. And so we are seeing a drop in our funded ADA. And that's why even with the one percent COLA, we have less revenue next year because we're seeing a drop in our ADA. But we've now gotten to that point where we're funded on our actual student attendance. And so we see that growing from here forward. We are also putting some pause and doing some funding shifts on our, in our own budget around facilities and funds that we set aside for textbooks. We have a healthy reserve in some of our facility accounts as well as textbooks, so we can continue to buy steep space sparkle books. And and do our adoptions because we have those ending balances in place. We did estimate some savings from retirements with our early retirement incentive. Somewhere in the neighborhood of five to six million dollars. We will come back later next year as we've got all those positions in place to know exactly what our savings were. And then we're utilizing our ending fund balance to continue implementing our five-year plan for learning recovery. So last year, as we closed out the books, we had about sixty million dollars fall to our ending balances. And so those revenues were received in a prior year, we'll be using those ending balances over the next two years. To continue that five-year plan and then working in the fall to kind of figure out how we phase into or out of learning recovery. And so that will show itself in our multi-year projection and our restricted ending balances will show as shortfall deficit of about twenty million dollars over the next two years. So some of the highlights, four hundred and seventy-eight million dollars in general fund revenue. This is a more normalized budget for us. There are no additional one-time funds included in in this budget. Three hundred and seventy-five million in our local control funding formula. And again, that's about four million dollars less than in our current fiscal year. Federal funds are, you know, just over twenty million. Our other state funds are things like our ELOP funding. Transportation, Prop 28, arts and music, and so forth. And that's what it looks like in terms of our chart. Funding sources. On the expenditure side, again, more expenditures than revenues as we're utilizing fund balance to balance our budget. So salaries and benefits, four hundred and twenty-eight million. This is kind of in line with historical budgets where about eighty, eighty-six percent of our budget is people. We are a people organization. All expenditures are six hundred and eleven million in our general fund and all other funds. And again, this shows how those salaries and benefits, the eighty-six percent of our total expenditures. On our multi-year projection, we really focus in on the unrestricted side of our budget, that is the main operational part of our budget. And we do have a slight shortfall, one point eight million projected for 2425. At second interim, when we brought this report, we expected this number, we had shown this number at about ten million. And so that's a result of some of the actions that the board's taken to try and get us back to a more balanced budget. So we'll use a little bit of our reserve to balance our budget for next year on the unrestricted side. And then on the restricted side, again, this is utilizing those learning recovery funds. It has been our plan for the last, for the last several years was to use those funds for the next two years. And then we will phase into or phase out of learning recovery in the third year. On the other restricted funds, you know, all of our other funds are solvent. We have a couple of facility funds where we do spend down some of those ending balances, which is typical with the facilities funds when you have, you know. Cash on hand or you have, you know, outstanding or bonds, cash on hand to do those projects. Excess minimum reserve, so each year we have to present our minimum reserve requirement and then our ending fund balances. And so this year, our ending fund balances on the unrestricted side, again, forty-four point five million. Our minimum reserve requirement is just over fifteen million, so we have about twenty-nine point five million. That is considered to be in excess of our minimum reserve and that is again to meet the board's fund balance policy of having a minimum reserve of fifteen percent. Now that is above what the state cap is right now, but that is, that is a goal. Next step, so hopefully the legislature will adopt the budget by the end of this week, otherwise they don't get paid. So there's a little incentive there. And then the governor will sign by the end of the month, we will come back next week and request that the board adopt our budget. And then again, in early fall, we will identify actions needed to balance the 2526. So we'll jump into the next year's budget planning very shortly. I do want to say before I get to question answers, thank you very much to Kyla Johnson for stepping in and really guiding us through this year's budget development process. And I also want to introduce somebody, Justine Lemus is joining us as her budget coordinator, she started today, so welcome.
Welcome. All right, is there any public comment? Any board member comments or questions?
Okay, I just want to say just thank you, all of you for keeping us solvent. I know it's a hard, it's a hard job, so thank you so much.
Definitely, I will close the public hearing and reconvene regular session, this was not an action item, it was a first read. All right, our next public hearing is collective bargaining agreement between Visel Unified School District and CSEA. I will now open the public hearing to allow for public comment on this item and. There's Assistant Superintendent Ben Dillon.
Hello, good evening, Board President, Chief Business Officer, and members of the board. I am excited to present to you the tentative agreement reached between the bargaining teams from the Visel Unified School District Team and our CSEA bargaining team. Just want to say that there was, just continued to be an ongoing collaborative spirit and action that's taken place between these teams. I would say amongst this team because they really do function as a team. It's been very exciting to see that work, continuing to obviously take care of our employees and do right by them, but always with the spirit of keeping students at the core of that work. And so big thanks to Crystal Lopez, Brad Thompson, Dr. Judy Burgess, and other members of that team who've helped lead that work. At this time, I, and I apologize, I, I shared with some of you earlier, maybe a little misleading, this is an action item. So requesting that you approve the tentative agreement between the parties as mentioned.
I don't even think I'm on, all right, any public comment? Any board member comments? Then seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and reconvene the regular session. May I have a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement between Visel Unified School District and the California School Employees Association, Chapter eighty-three. And the classified salary schedules for the fiscal year 2024-25, effective July first, 2024.
So moved.
I'll second.
On a motion by Board Member Odo and a second by Board Member Vegas.
Motion passes unanimously, seven zero.
All right, I will now open the public hearing to allow for public comment on the item of collective bargaining agreement between Visel Unified School District and VUTA for the 2024-25 school year.
Similar to what was shared in regards to CSEA. Our bargaining teams with VUT, our Teachers Association and our district team. Came together many times throughout the course of this year and are excited to present to the board for consideration of approval of this agreement. Between VUSD and VUTA that would become effective this July going forward through June thirty of 2026. And again, big thanks to Greg Price, Patrick Hemphill, members of the VUTA bargaining team. As well as the members of our district team who gave up many hours and days and lots of research and study. To bring together an agreement that we feel will best serve obviously our staff, but ultimately our students.
Okay, is there any public comment? Any board member comments? I will say definitely a big thank you going into the summer with both TAs done is definitely like a big stress off of. And so thank you to the teams on both sides for coming together and, you know, kind of doing what's best for kids. And so with that, could I have a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement between Visel Unified School District and VUTA? And the attached salary schedules for the fiscal year 2024-25, effective July first, 2024.
To approve.
I'll second.
On a motion by Board Member Nayler and a second by Board Member Case Pierce Seleno.
Motion passes unanimously, seven oh.
All right, stay right there, notice of intent to employ certificated management personnel and approval of administrative services credential waiver request. Assistant Superintendent Ben Dillon.
Thank you again. So we are requesting that the board approve the waiver of the administrative services credential for two employees. To allow them the additional time needed to pursue the completion of the program required for their preliminary credential.
All right, is there any public comment? Any board member comments? May I have a motion to approve the administrative services credential waiver requests?
I'll motion.
Second.
On a motion by Board Member Case Pierce Seleno and a second by Board Member Nayler.
Motion passes unanimously, seven oh.
And notice to intent to employ certificated personnel and approval of provisional internship permit requests.
Thank you again, requesting for the board to approve this provisional internship permit. You've kind of heard that as a PIP for one teacher in our district at this time.
Awesome, any public comment? Any board member comments, may I have a motion to approve the provisional internship permit request?
So moved.
Second.
On a motion by Board Member Gamoyen and a second by Case Pierce Seleno.
Motion passes unanimously, seven oh.
And last but not least, Superintendent VTRD Ben Dillon, intent to employ certificated personnel and approval of variable term waiver request for a speech-language pathologist.
Well done.
That pretty much says it all.
There you go, yes, as you know, just a little context. Speech pathology positions are very hard to fill across the state. And so specifically, these waivers are for a few of our speech pathologists who are continuing to move forward and pursuing. The requirements needed for that preliminary credential and we are thrilled to be able to bring them forward to you this evening.
Definitely, and is there any public comment? And any board member comments? May I have a motion to approve the variable term waiver request for speech-language pathologists?
I'll move it. I'll second.
On a motion by Board Member Belt and a second by Board Member Vegas.
Motion passes unanimously, seven oh.
And our warrant list for April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four to May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Chief Business Officer Nathan Hernandez.
So this is our routine item to approve the warrants from April twenty-seventh to May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Is there any public comment? Any board member comments? May I have a motion to approve the warrant list?
Move to approve.
Second.
On a motion by Board Member Odo and a second by Board Member Case Pierce Seleno.
Motion passes. Five with one abstention.
All right, and now it's seven oh one and his first time as superintendent, Mr. Hernandez, our meeting is adjourned.